It's just gonna, it's gonna give us an extension to get the shelter house done. And the S E T D folks would like for us to ask for an extension, so.
That's why we're going to extend, that's why we're going to amend it.
Right.
Because normally we wouldn't need it unless it's an emergency and it sounded like Chris has kinda declared this kind of an emergency type situation, so.
And like I said, it's not gonna cost anybody any money.
We, where you're gonna put that at?
At the very end.
Very end. Okay, I would like approval of the agenda with the, uh, the amendment for the extension of the park in the new business.
I'd make that motion.
Second please. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the amendment to put the park extension at the end of the new business. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, or all opposed nay. Motion passed. Motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Aye so moved.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from last meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Uh, payroll is still sitting on my file cabinet, Chris, I'm sorry I didn't get that approved. Uh, bills to be paid, Francis is not here.
Francis did come in and get through all of them, I would like to add a couple.
Fine.
Um, and guess I'm a little less, but, uh, Joe Nefel brought in his bill for, um, reviewing the bank statements. And then, uh, I had mileage going to, um, North Platte and back, uh, and I'm gonna apologize to you right now for that because that shouldn't happen. Uh, Rick and Myron took the car that day and, um, I didn't, I didn't tell them I was going to North Platte, so they, they had already left and.
That happens, don't worry.
I left at noon and, um.
That happens.
Yeah, so that won't happen again, I can promise you that.
Well, it will, but, you know, it just, it just happens.
I can't tell you, that was a, a pretty good meeting, uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that later, but.
Uh, so all the bills have been approved except for the two that you want to add?
Except for those two, and we can see if Franny can come in.
Tomorrow or something.
Look at those tomorrow, he, Franny couldn't be here tonight, he, I don't know what he did, but he's been going and seeing Jen and Jen's been putting him back together. Went through his hip out, he said he didn't think he could sit long enough to sit through a meeting, so.
Uh, approval of the bills to be paid with the two additions subject to Francis's approval, motion please.
Just let them over these little bit before we do that.
That's fine.
I just haven't even looked at them, but just see what, anything that catches your eye.
Yeah, if you got any questions, I'll do my best to answer them for you.
I see Joe Nefel's here, it's four twenty-five, is that, that extra stuff then, or just this one here?
No, that is for, um, whoa, was that five months? Yeah, that'd be five months, uh, five months of looking at, um.
That is five months, I thought I had that on one end of time already.
Well, yeah, we just had one, uh, well, we had one.
That's me.
But see, he started, he started late, we, we didn't get him to get here and get started on them, so he, he looked at two or three months and then he looked at five or six months altogether and so, now, now we're all cut up with this bill right here, this is November's bill.
Whoa, 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 yeah, there's one you gotta take off, Chris. The Northwest Iowa League of Cities, our name was drawn at our council pluffs meeting, that bill, that bill does not need to be paid.
So we need to take the twenty-five dollar?
Twenty-five dollars has got to come off, cause we are already paid, we don't wanna double pay that. Our name was drawn out of the hat, so you need to take that off.
This stocks bill for six hundred dollars, uh, what was that?
That was the meeting that we had up there?
For, uh, for Sat County League of Cities.
And what we did, we paid the whole bill and then we charged twelve dollars to play.
So reimbursed on that, so we're alright.
Chris collected checks from all the cities that did show up.
I seen that bill and I just, we didn't get twelve dollars, I used all of this.
You didn't get twelve dollars from me?
Fif- fifteen.
Twenty-four. I've been here, I wanted to go.
I'm just saying, we didn't get covered for the whole six hundred.
That avoid Rob, get him, get him!
I didn't realize this, you had to pay. Did you get Ron's?
No, no, I'm just saying, we don't get, we're not getting the cover for the whole.
We ain't counting Ron, you, just you.
No, and it worked out really pretty close, I mean, uh, we charged twelve dollars and I think we had, I don't know how many of our own people there, we had quite a few.
Twenty, twenty-two, I believe you were correct, twenty-two people.
Of ours?
Hmm, I believe that's much.
We had.
We had twelve or fifteen maybe, I think, um.
Two, four.
So.
I can't, I thought he was at twenty.
Yeah, we collected.
I think we had twelve then.
Twelve or so, I don't remember, it was, it was a lot.
I got up and I said we had four councilmen present. Times two, that'd be eight, plus me is nine, Chris is ten, his wife is eleven, twelve.
Rick and Merrill.
Rick, Rick, Rick and Dottie were there.
We had fifteen, so we had fifteen.
Myron.
Myron.
And Myron sixteen, yeah.
I knew I was close to twenty, I knew I wasn't far off, but yeah, that's where it lays.
Yeah.
But don't, don't play that, don't pay that, uh, that, uh, Northwest Iowa, uh, bill, that's gotta come off. Utility Safety and Design, seven eighty-three, Chris?
That was some supplies that we got from them and I'm not sure exactly what we, what we got from them, but, uh, this U S D I is a company that we've been using to do a little bit of our gas stuff. And so, um, that could be some, uh, some meters or some tees or something that Rick got, uh, for, uh, the addition up there.
Okay. N M P P, P Man Support, is that for?
Power Manager, that's our billing software.
Okay, okay.
That's, uh.
I, I.
Phone support, so whenever we call them.
Yep, your computer stuff, yep, yep. Any other questions? I kinda went through them a little bit myself. Entertain a motion to.
I move we approve the bills with the three changes prior to Francis looking at the last two.
Perfect, perfect.
Subject to Francis looking at the last two.
Perfect, second?
I'd second that motion.
Moved and seconded to accept all the bills to be paid with the, uh, two additions and the one deletion upon Franny's approval, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion carried. C D B G, uh, update total expense of the project and you will see that Chris has handed you a letter from Joe Rouschenberg, if you wanna go through that.
Yeah, you, you can see there on page six, you can see there's thirty-six thousand dollars worth of the project left and, uh, Joe and I talked a little bit today. Uh, the project is, is pretty close to done, there are, and you can read this, I mean, uh, there are a couple things that need to be done, uh, inside the wellhouse. Uh, as soon as they get the, this well actually working, so that can fill our tower, then they'll be able to shut down the wellhouse and do that work. Uh, and then they've gotta fill the couple of, uh, test wells, they gotta come in and, and abandon those for us, um, and, and then we're pretty much done and you start talking about the mulching and the seeding and then that kinda thing.
That's just what I was gonna ask you about, that dome over there down at, uh.
Yeah, what we're gonna do, what, what Joe talked about was, was holding that back and wait until next year, closing the project out, but holding that part of it back. I mean, just as, you know, we know Dave King, he knows us type of deal, he is gonna come in and get that done for us, uh, next spring, so.
Right around the well, we just, well, that little bit we seed ourselves.
Oh yeah, we sure could.
Don't need to, don't need anybody to seed that little pot.
Nope. So, that's the update there for that, otherwise, you know, there hasn't been a lot going on, they have the, the transformer ready to go and, uh, down there. Uh, looks like the electric guys are gonna be here in the next couple of days and they should, they should finish up depending on weather and, you know, sometimes that doesn't always go as planned, so.
You need, you don't need a, a motion or nothing on that, do you?
No, there's, there's nothing to motion on, uh.
Until it's come just to review.
Yeah, yeah, this is just a review.
That's what I thought.
Uh, we had, the question came up last, last meeting, how much money have we spent on this total project and I couldn't answer the question, so, um, look at page six, uh, where it says total. You see that kinda spreadsheet looking thing where it says total? If you add the hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars to the five hundred and eighty-four thousand, you get about six hundred and ninety-five thousand.
That should be about where it was.
That's where, that's what we spent to date. Uh, we, we kinda guessed that it would cost us six hundred and forty thousand dollars, well, we spent six hundred and ninety thousand to date and then we've got thirty-six thousand left, so we should be right around six hundred and twenty-five thousand when we get completely done, or seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, I'm sorry, uh.
So we're a little over budget.
So we're over budget, uh, you know, then you, you think about the fifteen thousand dollars worth of dirt that we found that had oil in it, uh, you think about the fifteen thousand dollars of, of, uh, casing that we had to put under the railroad, uh, you think about the extra expense for the length that we had to go from our wellhouse down to here and, uh, you know, there, there are several things, several reasons why we're over budget.
One big one was that putting that flow, flow meter in, that thing, if you look them numbers in there, that thing is, that thing is fifteen, twenty thousand itself. That they had to put a hell of a.
But I don't, I don't think.
We had to have that no matter what.
That wasn't in there, that flow meter was not in, in the deal to start with, that was added to the N R M, add that to it.
Towards the end?
Sure, that flow meter was not geared for that.
Well, I know one thing.
But.
And they put a hell of a pit to put that in, you should see.
We didn't do a change order on that, Gary.
Huh?
We did not do a change order on that.
The only thing we did a change order.
There was no flow meter to start with, I don't think.
We did not do a change order on it, look, change order number one is a sample valve for thirteen hundred bucks, change order number two is the nitro.
Okay.
Change order number three was the fire hydrant that we just did, and that's it.
The change, the, the, number three was a big one that Chris should, should have been added.
Yeah, that takes a thousand, yeah, that.
That was not.
You know, the hydrant is the one that should have been added.
That's, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Five almost.
Still probably would, I mean, it still would've cost us five thousand dollars, we just wouldn't have known about it upfront, so.
Any other questions for Chris? Let's move on to, uh, discuss approved TIF certification of eighty-one zero zero two and eighty-one zero zero six, and those are on page seven and eight.
Seven through about probably twelve or thirteen.
Yeah, if you scroll through it.
Yeah, um, so if you look at, if you look at page eight, that one will give you the most information on what we're certifying there. And what I did with these was I, was I figured out the, I took the, the valuations by each area and that's how I split this all up. Took our total amount of eighty-nine, roughly ninety thousand dollars, let's say, and I just split it out equally between the two districts and, and this is what we came up with.
Little over ninety thousand. Questions, discussion please?
We talked a little bit about this at the last meeting too, and you guys remember that what we wanted to do is we wanted to use that, um, transformer that we put down here, that fifteen hundred transformer, and they are, um, about twenty-two thousand dollars new, so, uh, it's pretty simple. I mean, we didn't use the whole twenty-two thousand dollars, we didn't have to, so.
Who's going to be watching, hers or yours?
Two-two-one-six. So if you guys got any questions about those, I'll, I'll answer them.
On that dome.
I'd have that, you can put whatever date you want in there, cause.
Put today's date.
Today's date, so.
That's when we're approving it.
I would, uh, accept a motion to approve, please.
Which number are we talking?
If we're done with discussion on both of them or either one, or?
Eighty-one zero zero two and eighty-one zero zero six.
Yeah, I'd just say it.
I'd make a motion to approve those two.
I'll second that, have to do a motion.
I don't know if I'm asking.
No, no, you can do them both at the same time like that, Ron, that's fine.
Been moved and seconded to approve TIF certifications eight-one zero zero two and eight-one zero zero six. Sorry, but roll call, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah.
Franny's absent, Albert's absent, Ron?
Yes.
Discuss and approve annual urban renewal report, which is on the next.
Yeah, and this is, this, I did not change anything on this, this is the same thing that we had on the last meeting, uh, just gave you guys a little time to look it over.
What page on?
Uh, thirteen starts, uh, with the general ledger reports, kinda talking, they're showing it.
That's that pamphlet, that's that, well, it's kind of a booklet type thing you let us take home.
Right.
Blast meeting.
These are the reports out of our, out of our accounting system that show where we, uh, the expenses that we had through the TIF, uh, fund.
Are, are this, uh, fourteen, Chris, is that just code?
Page fourteen?
Yeah, you got it written on the side.
Yeah.
Credits, okay.
What that, what that tells me, Ron, is, uh, like, let's take the top one there, it actually says eight-one zero zero two and then bio. Bio is the biodiesel, which is eight-one, zero, zero, six, uh, and that just tells me where we got them in, that way I can put them in the right category when, when we filled out the, uh, report, so.
Any other questions, discussion? Rob, any questions? Gary?
No, that eighty and fifty-one dollar received July fourteenth, what's that, just, we just collected some money, right?
That's, that's notes for me, uh, because what happens is they, they look at, at everything that was given to us from the county and the county always, uh, sends us an apportion sheet and says that, that it was apportioned to us on six-thirty of two thousand and thirteen, or fourteen, fifteen, whatever it is, but it never hits our bank account until the next fiscal period. So, we have to, I just have to know how much we received in this year that was supposed to be in last year, so we can, we can show the state that. I mean, they, they're not fooling around with this anymore, they wanna know exactly where every dollar's at.
Yeah, TIF is hot discussion, discussion down at the state house.
Everywhere, everywhere you go, it's, it's pretty, yeah.
They'll make sure we ain't abusing the funds.
Pretty hot topic, so.
Cause a lot of the larger cities are, they're really, they're really screwing the pooch.
And I'm not sure that they would, you know, do, do too much for eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-one cents, but if it was eight hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Yeah.
It'd be a little different story.
Ron, any questions, discussion?
No.
How about a motion to accept the urban renewal report for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen?
Hold on.
Second please?
I'd second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, roll call, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah.
Ron?
Yes.
Approved. Um, is that in the?
Yeah.
Okay, D G R, uh, contract is supposed to be in your, uh, I haven't got that far, I'm sorry. Fifteen, I believe?
Oop.
Page fifteen?
No, it's page thirty-two, it starts.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, jeez, I'm still on TIF, jeez, hang on, chief, I'm behind the times.
And really what we, what we asked, uh, D G R to do is to look at, look at the area that we want to put new, um, electric lines in. We asked them to tell us where and what size a transformer should be, tell us where to put it, what size should it be, and what wire do we run from here to here. Now, everything from the transformer to the house, uh, we're not, we didn't ask them to do that. Yeah, the wire from the transformer to the house.
Is that still, is that still city or is that homeowner?
Uh, well.
Huh?
City as long as we're on the outside of the meter.
Right, okay, that's what I, that's what I.
We go to the meter.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out.
That's kind of, that's kind of been our policy.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to find out.
And so if the meter's on the, on the box.
Like mine.
On, on the transformer and we go from there to the house, then it would be there, but that's what Bob Mead wants us to do, we've never done that before.
Right.
Put them on the.
He wants to put them, he wants to put them in the alley, so the homeowner's responsible from, like, the alley.
I know.
To the house.
Well, in underground, you're running them boxes, are they big enough to set the meters, put meters on them? They're not very big boxes.
No.
I don't think you can do it.
Well, you could build them, you could build them.
You'd have to build them, but you'd have to build a, have a box made to handle the meters someplace in there.
Yeah.
Because them.
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's anything that we wanna do, honestly, I mean, it's.
I don't either.
It'd, it'd be nice, because then we wouldn't have to worry about it and it'd be their expense, but I'm just not sure.
You're gonna piss, you're gonna piss a lot of homeowners off.
I'm just not sure that's something that we wanna do.
We're getting in trouble there already.
So what is this contract entailing us that they want from us?
Well, they want thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars if they do the work, but, uh, if we go down, let's just skip all the rigmarole, all this stuff here, unless you guys wanna read that.
What page you want me to go to?
Um, trying to get there.
About thirty.
It's, uh, thirty-seven, where it says scope of work.
Okay.
So, if you look at the first one there, provide field design staking, which includes walking field observations of entire project, developing, developing notes and collecting data required to complete the design, one trip plan to complete this. Okay, so that means that they're gonna come down here, they're gonna spend the day, they're gonna walk that whole thing, they're gonna say, yep, this looks like this, this looks like this, they're gonna put all that information in their computer, punch their little button, you know, do whatever they do and then, and then that's gonna be where they do complete design and staking sheet, production utilized, digital aerial photography and, and that stuff. Okay, and they're also gonna do the list of materials. So all they're really gonna do is they're gonna make a map for us, they're gonna give us a list of materials and, and, um, and if you go down, there's a couple other things that they're gonna do. Respond to questions by Myron, when Myron says, eh, you know what, I don't know what to do here, uh, so that, that you're not gonna know, I mean, this is all completely hourly.
I see it says thirteen, four hundred estimated hourly.
Right, we're not gonna know exactly what that's gonna cost, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna make sure that they don't come down here any more than they don't need to.
Cause he gets about what, a hundred some dollar an hour?
Well, let's, let's stay on page thirty-eight here, cause one thing that we do want them to do that says not required is, uh, record drawings will be furnished along with final inventory of installed units. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure what that exactly means, but what we do want at the end is a map. We wanna be able to have a map that shows where our systems at and so, so that, I don't believe that's in here in this bid anywhere, so that'll, you know, cost us whatever that, whatever that cost us, I don't know. But you can see some of the things that they wanted to do, you know, they wanted to, they wanted to do, uh, I mean, bid packets and, uh, contractor materials, suppliers and, I mean, it's just, we, we don't need to do that, they wanted to line up the, um. Construction guy.
Well, if we can keep it down to the.
Contractor.
Minimum, deals walking that line should tell you where the transformer's going and everything, we might get let by for less than thirteen-five.
We could, it, it could go either way, Gary, honestly.
Yeah, we just don't know for sure, but.
Yeah, if you, if you take this by their hourly fees, which is the last sheet that they gave us.
Thirty-one twenty-five per hour, or no, that's GPS survey equipment, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, you, you're gonna look at, you're gonna look at the bottom one, which is two hundred bucks an hour. If you take fifteen thousand divided by two hundred bucks an hour, you got seventy-five hours. And I don't know how long it takes for the computer to do whatever it does, but there's no way in hell they can spend seventy-five hours down here looking at this thing.
Hell, we can just about walk it and with this transformer sitting there, they've gotta, no, we gotta put one back.
Yeah, but you don't know what kind it is, you don't know what wires.
Well, they, they, we know what we have in there now, so we, we don't, we already know the wire.
We have nobody that's comfortable doing that.
Well, I'm not saying that Myron couldn't easy do that.
Myron won't do it, I'm telling you that.
But we do know the wire, we pretty well know the wire we need though.
He'll do it from the transformer of the house, but he's not gonna do the main stuff, not gonna do it.
No, we didn't hire him to do that.
No, we didn't hire him to that.
I know, so you just want to get that on your mind.
I didn't say that, no, you just, you got me lost, I'm trying to tell you this, this guy will know what wire, we pretty well know what wire, I'm sure we know the wire's coming down there.
Well, I just thought you were moving into the.
No, you just got, you got lost a little where I was from.
It sounded like that, Gary, so.
Yeah.
So, what we need to do is, is either approve or not approve, uh, this contract and, and basically what we're doing is we're saying, yep, we want you to do the work, uh.
But not as in-depth is what they're wanting?
No.
Well, then we talk fifty thousand.
Not as, not as in-depth as what they wanted to before.
That's what I'm saying.
As in-depth as what they've got here.
Oh, okay. So you're looking at the thirty-one, what was it? Oops.
Do you think we can say we're not thirteen-five is, is the max? Or thirteen thousand, or you said thirteen-four go here?
Well, that's what this says.
Right.
Thirteen-four.
Four.
Not more than that.
Do, do you wanna put in there that, uh?
Not to exceed thirteen-four?
We'll, we'll approve this if we have in there not to exceed thirteen thousand, four hundred, uh, four hundred dollars.
Well, that makes some sense, cause every time we do these engineers, we get overrun, so, that makes some sense?
Not to me, you know, just stop that thirteen-four, they're not done, and say, okay.
If he's gonna do it for thirteen-four, then that's what he's gonna do it for.
Well, but.
Yeah, but if he were, uses up thirteen-four as worth of hours, then he says, okay, I'm done. Now, we're not quite done with what you wanna get done, but that's where I am.
I can see where Rob's coming from, then you're screwed.
He says they should do it.
That's an estimate.
Yeah, but then, like Rob said, then you're screwed, because if, if they stop, or Rob says they stop.
We think it should be less.
I don't.
What Chris and I do.
I think thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars is a steal.
I think, uh, where we started, I think this is a great price.
Yeah, I do too.
Do we want them, want them to do it for less? Hell yes, we want them to do it for less, but.
Not to exceed the thirteen-four is what we'd like.
That's what we'd like.
That's what I, I would say then.
Is there a way to put that in there, Rob, to, to not?
Oh, I'm sure you can, but if he's not done.
We've been asking, who are you, where are you?
Yeah, then we're, yeah, I know exactly where you're at.
Thirteen-four.
Well, you, you can put it in there, you can put in there that they want it to exceed thirteen-four, and then if he gets to the thirteen-four and there's still more to do, we can go in there and change.
Amend it.
The contract, we can amend the contract and make a new contract if we wanna go through this again, we can do that.
I'm like Rob though.
Every time we do something, we get a hell of a run every damn time.
Hypothetically, let's say he goes to thirteen-six, then we've gotta go back in, we've gotta amend the damn thing, I agree with Rob.
I understand that, but at the same time, uh.
Well, I don't wanna give you an open checkbook either, but.
No, that's right, that's correct.
But jeez and crackers, who's gonna?
If he claims, he says thirteen-four will do it, then that should do it.
Well, look at what it says though, Gary.
Estimated hourly.
It says, the engineering fees associated with this project are follows, design phase, nine thousand, eight hundred dollars estimated hourly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they're not saying this is set in stone.
Right.
Now, we, we can put in there, or we can ask them to put in there.
That it's set in stone.
That this, that we want a not to exceed and, you know, see what they say, and that, that all has to be put in the motion.
Can.
Well, I think it's kind of a moot point anyway, because if we go over that, we gotta have a change order anyway, don't we?
Right.
So it doesn't matter, we gotta have a change order anyway, if we're gonna do it.
Unless you can get Chris to set it in concrete, to get him to set that in concrete, then we wouldn't have to have a change order, correct, Chris?
Yeah, then you wouldn't have to have a co- a change order, but, but what happens then if, if the bill actually should have been ten thousand? Then we still pay thirteen thousand four hundred.
Yeah, we're stuck either way, we're kind of a deal where we, we, maybe less, see, that, you run into this issue now, ain't we?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna get billed at hour, at an hourly wage, that's what we're, that's how we're gonna get billed. And. I think what we, I think what we need to do is we need to just make sure, and when I say we, that means me, I need to make sure that these guys only spend so much time on this thing. And we just need to harp on them all the time and. I mean. We. Kinda harped on them pretty good to get this from where they were down to this thirteen thousand four hundred dollars, I mean. Paul and I were on the phone constantly. For a week because he didn't know what to do, he's like, I don't know what to do, I've never run into this before, I said, well, you gotta get it lower than what you got it, that's what you gotta do, figure it out.
I'm, I'm just so scared that what Rob says is correct. They're gonna run into the thirteen four fifty and all of a sudden, we're fifty bucks over and then we gotta do a whole bunch of amendments. And it ain't worth them stopping to where they're at, right Rob? I mean, it's, it's stupid.
I just think it, it sends a little bit of mistrust too.
Yeah, we never dealt with this guy before, so we don't know where we're at.
Sure, he did, he did the, he did the. The new line all the way around.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Well, you guys. Discuss it. And come up with a good motion.
Well, if you think you can hold him down, Chris, let's go with what we, what we got. We could try it and see what happens, see if we get shot down or.
I guess we can always amend it, can't we?
Well, we're gonna have to amend it either one way or the other, it doesn't matter. We're gonna have to do some kind of a change order. Because we're okay in this contract right now. And if it's not the same, we'll have to change it.
Only other expenses expected to be built directly are travel ready costs. Primary mileage and something, so right there he's saying.
Could be, it could be more.
Well, he's gonna do the design in for us, but every time Myron calls him with a question, he's gonna know this for an hour.
Yep.
You know, I mean, that's gonna happen too.
I said, it's, it's an estimate of these expenses, I can understand that.
And this is the first time he's taken a shot at something like this too, you know, I mean, we've got a. We've got a lot of work to do, we've got to develop contracts for major materials. Uh, furnishing bidding documents for people, that's kind of an extensive deal, you know, that's gonna be. It's gonna be, but we're taking that out of their hands because we wanna be our own general contractor, but still. You know, they always, you gotta compare apples to apples all the time.
Yep.
So I, you know, we're. I think it's great we're doing it this way, and I think that the thirteen four is a fair price. I don't think I've ever seen something that cheap for what we're gonna do, you know, that's what I'm saying.
For an engineer cost.
Put in one line going south and there wasn't, that was eight hundred thousand dollars, you know, and we put in. Another one going around, that there, that was a hundred and some thousand dollars, you know, going around and over to.
You're exactly right, Rob.
But we hired that down, we're here, we're doing our own, that's the big, that's the big check right there.
You know, I mean, that was. That was all, it, it just was.
Well, if you think that's really cheap, then let's say that, that is what it is.
Well.
I, I, I will, I'll make the motion that we accept the thirteen thousand estimated hourly. For the, the work that they, they are to do, the engineering fees.
And I'll second it.
With possible less?
With possible less.
Or possible more? How do you want that word, Chris? I mean, especially you wanna.
Nothing, I mean.
I think just how, I think just how he said it, estimated hourly, I mean, that means that it's estimated and you don't know exactly what it's gonna cost.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Uh. Motion's been made, I need to second. Motion's been made and accepted, uh, seconded to accept the, uh, DGR.
Contract.
Contract, um. Roll call, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Okay. And you'll chew and screw him a little harder, Chris.
Chris is gonna watch it.
Okay.
I think, you know, I think the guy's.
I, I agree with you, Rob.
Pretty good information for.
I, I agree with you.
Reasonable cause.
Yeah. I think he really is.
Hopefully.
And he's, he's done what we asked him to do, I think, you know.
Yeah, and, and honestly, Rob, that's a really good point, I mean, we, we had, when we first started this whole thing. We had three engineers who wanted to come in here and sell their services to us.
Right.
I told all three of them, I said, listen to what we want. Because if you come in here and you tell us something other than what we want, we're not gonna pick you. This was the only guy.
That.
That listened to what we wanted.
Yep, you're right.
And that's why we had him down here doing the, doing the seventy-five hundred dollars worth of work, everybody else wanted to tell us what the whole project was gonna cost, we didn't want that. So, yeah, I, I agree, I think he will listen to what we, what we wanna do.
I don't think we can go wrong at this price for what we're getting done.
I think you got.
As long as he can stay with clumps, you know, like I said, we give themselves prizes once in a while.
Okay. Jason Fredericks is building in addition to the existing house, the addition will tie into the existing house and measure twenty-two foot by twenty-four foot. The roof will also tie into the existing house roof, the rear setback is forty-six feet, the right side setback sixty-four feet. Front and left setbacks don't change from the original house, all setbacks are well within the minimum requirements. Corey Weber will be doing the construction of the house, all looks good to proceed, sign Gil Goodner, who is our. Uh, inspection person.
All right, you can see a little picture of it there, a couple pages down, page forty-one. Or maybe forty-two, I guess. Yeah, forty-two. Now, this was, this was brought in the day of our last meeting. Uh, yeah. And, uh, she said, they're gonna start pouring cement next week, and I said, yeah, I don't know if they'll get that done or not, but. I said, since you're, since you're only doing what you're doing here, you're not going past the house to the east and you're not going past the house to the south. I said, if they, if they think they can get the concrete poured, I don't have a problem with it. I said, but Gail's gonna come up and look it over and he's gonna okay it, so we're gonna okay it at the next meeting. And so, I don't know if anything's been done there.
I don't see none.
I don't think so.
I didn't think anything had been done.
Weber's not that fast a guy to get going.
Okay.
I'll make my own motion that we pass the permit.
Second.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to accept the building permit from Jason Frederickson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, Nate? Discussing approved natural gas O and M plan.
Okay, now we gotta go from here. To. Your packet and open the O and M plan because we don't have it in this packet. Go to your packet folder.
O and M revision.
Go back to where you got your packet from there, Ron. Right under there.
Gas system operating maintenance plan.
Get to his desktop and then right, right there in that folder.
Yeah, it's separate.
So as you guys can see, in the bottom left-hand corner here, this thing's a hundred and twenty-six pages long. So we're not gonna go through the whole thing. I don't expect you guys to go through the whole thing. Uh, what I do wanna do though is I wanna begin the process of. Um. Kinda letting you guys see this stuff, and this is, this is something that we have to. We have to have in writing, we have to have somebody that sees that we're doing this, Mark used to do all this stuff, and now. Uh, now that he's gone, I'm. I'm gonna take this over and, and start doing this, but. Uh. If you read through here, this thing goes over. Uh, every single thing that you can think of with our gas system. Uh, what do we do when there's an emergency, what do we do when there's a, just a.
If the line is hit.
A gas line that gets hit, uh, distribution line, a transmission line, there's two different things. You know, there, uh, there is. And you can see there's a hundred and twenty-six pages, there's a. Ungodly amount of stuff that, that we have to do and. Uh. Thank the good Lord that we haven't had to do it because we haven't had any problems.
Is this that same company that want, wanted to, that we're helping out?
No.
Okay.
This is IMU.
Okay.
IMU gives it the, gives us the plan, this is federal government stuff.
Okay.
This is federal regulations.
Okay.
Uh. So. I, I really don't wanna specifically say anything about this, I mean, there's so much stuff in here, you can go through here and look. Division one talks about the scope.
Purpose and construction scope.
Really, yeah, what that does, I mean, if you go down and look at. Uh, the first part of this thing. What it does is it kinda tells you who's supposed to be doing it, what they're supposed to be doing. Uh, you're supposed to go over this thing once a year, and that's what I wanna do with you guys, I wanna kinda go over it once a year. Have you guys. Say, yeah, okay, we did some revisions to it, um.
Should we have this?
You can see, you can see on page, um. Ten or nine. You can see where it's been reviewed. Who reviewed it, what they reviewed. Uh. And. If you look above that a little bit, there's a, a planned minister, administrator. Uh, and that, that's always been the city administrator. Uh. Mark's always been the one that's done it, but the, in this plan, it's always been the city administrator that administrates the plan. So I, you guys can go through this and look at it as much as you want to, it's on your computer now, so you can. Really do whatever you want to with it.
Should.
Uh.
Is there a reason that we should have a hard copy to take home and kinda go through it, or?
Uh, no.
Hundred and twenty pages?
I don't think so. I mean, that's six hundred pages of paper if we give it.
No, I, I, I'm just asking, I just asked.
Seven hundred and fifty pages of paper, I don't think, I think if, I mean, if you guys really wanna go through it.
I believe you just come and get picked this up and go through it.
Should do it on the computer and look at it and, uh. I would, certainly wouldn't go through line item by line item if I was you guys, I mean, that.
Hundred and twenty pages, wow.
Could take you forever, but there are some things that are kinda important in here, you know, uh.
Do you wanna touch briefly and highlight them?
Like customer meters and regulators. Keep your damn, keep your damn hands off.
Yeah, well. Anytime you're talking about the customer, it's a little bit important, um.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
There's free, free natural gas in here, anything like that.
Yeah, we better not do that, we had enough.
Page seventy-two?
Yeah, I mean, you can look anti, uh, anti-drug plan, we have to have a testing, I mean, anybody that answers the phone or goes out and works on natural gas, they have to be tested for drugs and alcohol. That's why we, that's why we do our drug and alcohol testing. Not really for any other reason.
Is that at random?
Yes. We're in a consortium with Saint Luke's, uh, Sioux City. And, uh, the last three, every quarter, somebody gets drawn.
Pull.
The last three quarters, we haven't had anybody drawn, so. Uh. And then. You know, the next three quarters, we could have two or three people drawn.
Yeah, it's not, it's. It's, it's nothing. To go a year and not even have anybody pulled, and, and the next one, you can have bing, bing, bing.
Yeah.
You're pulled, pulled, pulled. So, and it could be the same guy.
Yeah, so it goes through here to, by divisions, you just go.
They don't do, they don't take counsel, no, do they?
No.
No. You're, you're safe, Ron.
No, and Gary's safe.
I wasn't.
So, uh, one, one other thing that I wanna tell you about this too is, is we've got a guy coming in, uh, he actually was gonna be here tomorrow and Wednesday to do an audit. On. Our gas system. And, and what they do is they go out and look at our gas system and make sure. Uh, like the last time they did it in two thousand twelve, we have a meter back here. For the community center and it just was sitting there, well, people can park in front of it. So they wanted us to put, uh, steel pole, poles in front of it, so they can't hit it. That was one of the things that they found, one of the things that we fixed, so. Uh, you know, it's not bad to have an audit, um. Some of this, I, you know, I, I just don't know how much of this stuff was being done. Cause I haven't done it, uh, Mark was the one who always took care of it, which. He, again, really did a pretty good job of paperwork, so. Uh, we probably are okay, but. Uh, you know, there's gonna be a little bit of a.
You did a pretty good job of doing that part, didn't you?
He didn't do too bad, yeah.
Any other questions, discussion?
So just, just so you guys know, this is on your, on your computer now, so.
We're gonna be tested on this lady, guys.
You very well could be.
We didn't know which hospitals we gotta send the people to get hurt on, right here.
And the guy to your left is drawing up the test, so. I would entertain a motion to accept the, uh, natural gas O and M plan updated for twenty fourteen.
And I, and I would actually like for you guys to okay this, um, on my honor. I mean, this is, this is a plan that we get from IMU, so IMU does all the changes and, um, so. It's, it's up to date, it's what we need.
Yep. We have to have it on file.
Yeah, we have to have it on file.
Motion please.
I'm making a motion, we accept the plan with Chris's.
Bless him.
Yeah.
Second?
So moved.
Moved and seconded to approve the natural gas O and M plan updated for twenty fourteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, Nate? Updated, Chris? You wanna go through the WAPA mean? You, uh, sounded like you were very, uh. Energetic and enthusiastic about the meeting that you went to.
Yeah, you know, I was pretty happy to go out to that meeting, uh, first thing I wanna talk about though was the WAPA meeting on Wednesday. Uh, I told you guys that I was gonna go to Omaha on Wednesday morning. Uh, to a WAPA meeting, well. I decided, I had some stuff that I needed to get done, so I decided that I would call. Uh, the people at WAPA and see what actually was gonna be done at that meeting, if there was something that I really needed to be there for, or if not.
Hear about.
Right, and, um, the lady that I talked to basically just told me that. What they wanna do at this meeting is just give everybody who's there information that says that they wanna join, uh, SPP. SPP is a Southern Power Pool and, um, you know, they, we're in MISO. Mid, midwestern, something. I don't know what it is. But it's the same thing as SPP, it's a pool of people. Uh, basically, it's so they can charge you for transmission. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kinda ridiculous, but that's, that's what it is and. Uh, the way I understand it is, is WAPA is willing to join. SPP is willing to accept WAPA, uh, and. Um, WAPA's gonna get out of some costs that they would have to. Uh, furnish if they didn't get in with SPP. And so, it's a win-win for everybody, SPP's happy, WAPA's happy, we're happy, obviously, because WAPA's costs aren't gonna go up. Uh, the, the thing that we can't get too excited about is FERC. Uh, the federal government is. They have to approve this at the end, and they haven't done that yet.
You love all these acronyms?
So. Yeah, it's the federal government's rules, FERC. Uh. So, yeah, it's the federal government's rules, FERC. Uh, that's the-
Sure doesn't have Obama sitting written in there somewhere?
That's the big hand. No, they were here before Obama. Uh, but that, you, so that, that's, that's good news. Uh, the really good news is that uh, when I went out to North Platte, we've been talking a little bit uh, in these meetings. The guys have been talking a little bit about changing the way we're billed for our electric through mean. And um, uh, they didn't do it out there because, you know, this is a big ship and it takes a long time to turn it. But uh, what, what we did talk about was in the next fiscal year, which their fiscal year starts uh, April first. So in uh, starting then, they, they could possibly charge us a different way. And what they would do is they would throw all of the uh, fixed costs that they have into a pot and they would split that out as a percentage of, of what we get from them. And, and it wouldn't be on a percentage of what they think we're gonna buy. It would be on a percentage of what we actually did buy over the last three years.
You're talking April twenty fifteen?
Right. So we could potentially start a different uh-
Billing system.
Billing rate, let's call it.
Right, exactly.
And if, if they do this, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on it in January. If, if it's approved, uh, then our cost will go down by thirteen percent.
Oh, wow.
From mean. Now, the reason it's gonna go down by thirteen percent, we're the biggest winner by far because we've been paying more than anybody else, more than our fair share uh, than anybody else. For, yeah, right. So, um-
So our thirteen percent's more money, cause we've been paying more than thirteen.
Thirteen percent of fifteen percent is what, that's about fifteen percent of our electricity.
Well, actually, you know, I, I figured that out, Rob, and, and it would actually, it would actually, if, if it works the way they're saying it's gonna work, it could actually drop our total rate by five percent, four and a half percent. That's a pretty big deal.
That's a big deal. We buy such little juice from them, basically, cause we get so much from WAPA.
But it's gotta work.
And, and our windmill, we're probably buying probably less juice compared to most all in the towns.
Yeah, but our margin'll go up then.
No, but our costs are-
Our costs will decline because our margins will go up.
Yeah. Our, our margins will go up now.
So that will help us out on our electric upgrade if we can take that margin that we're saving.
Oh, yeah, if we can get this through, it'd be out of the deal, Steve.
If it works the way they say it's gonna work, I mean, first of all, if it goes through, second of all, if it works the way they say it's gonna work, it will certainly be a good thing for us. Certainly.
Way it sounds, yeah. Now, do you have another meeting before you go back out and vote then?
No. There'll be a meeting in January. And it, and everybody, everybody, the way I understand it, everybody was at the meeting on Wednesday night or Wednesday at four o'clock. I wasn't there. I didn't get there till six or something like that, so um, I wasn't at that meeting. And that wasn't a meeting for this. That was a, some other, they've got many, many committees, ad hoc committee, service committee, blah, blah. So they met and, and talked about that, but there's one town that gets hurt by this. And that's uh, Aspen, Colorado, and they get hurt to the tune of about twenty-six percent.
And the reason I would guess is because they are a uh, a uh, uh, skiing.
Yeah, you're uh, probably not using the juices, might use it one time.
Actually, actually what it is, is they're, they're exactly the opposite of us. They have, they have several things kinda like we do. They have generation, not necessarily wind, but they have generation. But they, they have been, uh, their uh, demand has been so low and they've been using so much that kinda, we've been paying for them over these years and now, and they're way bigger than us, so not really, but, so it's just a-
Yeah, pick up their fair share then.
Polar opposite of us.
Our demand is, they haven't lowered their demand. We've lowered our demand, but they haven't lowered our cost. We've talked about that.
Yeah.
And maybe we've come to the electric rate that should, that's supposed to-
So they're, so they're the exact opposite of that. We've been lowering our demand where our demand has been staying here. So we're going like this and their demand's staying here and theirs is going up.
Up, right.
So.
Well, that's because of like their lift chairs or lift, that's all electric and stuff or whatever they're using.
Whatever, whatever it is, it is.
It could be whatever. It could be anything.
Yeah. So, I mean, th- this is good news. It's not gonna happen tomorrow. It can't happen tomorrow. Hopefully it happens for next fiscal year. Honestly, it rea- really would, would make a big difference to us.
That's just an update. We don't need a motion or nothing. Is there any more questions, concerns? Anything you want from Chris? Anything you wanna tell Chris to take with him in January?
Yeah, the, in the meeting.
Double Aspens?
There was, there was fifty, sixty people probably in the meeting room.
Wow.
It's, it's really kinda neat. They have, uh, everybody's up front who talks. And they have this great big meeting room and tables and you're all sitting out here and you've got this little clicker. And when they ask you to vote, you push a button and it shows that you voted up there and it tallies it all up, so you don't have to say aye and, cause you vote several times, you know, so it's kinda neat. Okay, so it's just a long frickin' ways out there. It is, and it's just boring. Rob?
Hopefully you said, we used to have an airport. We could've bought you a plane.
Well, that's what I think we should do. Maybe a, maybe a helicopter. Let's talk about that at the next meeting, shall we?
Questions, Rob? Discussion? Gary? Ron? Okay, I'm gonna move us on. Discuss curb painting and various points. First thing that I wanna bring up, I see the signs have not come down at Goofy and Goofy's place.
Right. So, yeah, we'll uh, we'll try to get to work on that. That's-
You can see the curbs again, it's nozzled off.
That's kinda been not a priority. They did, they did each get a letter that said that they could park in there.
I signed a letter.
And so, yeah.
But I see he's scared too, so he won't park in there.
Yeah, well, I don't know that he's scared to.
Dude, is there must be some other curb painting that you would like to see done?
Well, I had somebody stop in here the other day and, and uh, she was talking to me about her, her lane, her driveway. And really has a, kind of a good point. Um, they, there, there's a, a church that's by their house and so when people go to church, they park next to their driveway and, and they can't back out real well, so what they were asking is if we could paint a yellow curb, you know, a couple of feet on either side of their driveway, whatever it is, four foot. And then, you know, that got me to thinking that there are a few other places who have talked to me about that before. Um, by the baseball field, there's a lot of people who park there during baseball season and-
Especially around your dad's house and stuff.
And, yeah, not necessarily my dad, but across the street.
I understand where you're talking, where you're coming from.
I don't even know what that lady, the young, the young Mac lady uh, would like to see some no parking there. Uh, so I, you know, I just, man, I don't wanna spend any time talking about it. We've already spent plenty of time talking about everything else, but uh, I think it's something that we should really look at and, and maybe what I would say is that, that Rick and I could go out and look at some of these places and bring them back and say to you guys, you know, what do you think about us painting four foot here, four foot there?
Yeah. Do you recommend?
Give you a recommendation and you guys say yay or no. You know, I don't, we don't wanna do it everywhere, I mean.
No, cause you get-
Yeah, and obviously we can get ourselves in trouble by painting curbs, so. So this is something that we'll bring back to you.
That's fine. That's great. I think, I think it's a very viable. Can I ask uh, uh, any other questions on the, the paints? Then I'm gonna ask you, how are we doing on delinquent bills, utility bills and stuff?
We gotta, before we do that, let's do the extension for the shelter house.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. That was on, yeah, it wasn't added on here.
Yeah.
Uh, extension for the park shelter house. Chris, tell them what, what you're, I know what, I know what you got in mind. We wanna extend it so that there's a park.
Yeah, I mean, Don, Don basically explained it to us at the last meeting that uh, there's a form that we fill out uh, just to ask the Sack County Endowment folks to uh, let us, you know, go past the first of the year and, and probably, I would, I would guess we'd even ask till maybe April, April or May first, you know?
July.
Okay, in July.
That's what I'm guessing.
And, and that's fine. I mean, all it is, is a form that, that we have to fill out and we send it into them and they-
Accept or deny it.
Accept or deny it. And I, I'm pretty sure they're gonna be fine with it. I mean, I understand the issues that we've gone through this year.
There's a deadline date is what Chris is getting at and we won't make that deadline date.
What was the deadline?
Actually, the first deadline date was August, August uh, first, maybe.
Was it beginning?
And, no, for the, for the ending. And that was a mistake made by the people who filled out the application, so we had to, we had to, already did one extension and we may have extended that through, through December.
Was it December first or December thirty-first? I can't remember.
I don't know either, but I know Jamie wanted it to be done November first, so.
Do you remember, Rob, what that extension was?
No, he would've never seen it.
Okay. I, I know it's an extension. It scares me right off the top of my head, but uh, I'd like to see us another extension till-
July should do it.
Yeah, that's what, July first. That's what I'm guessing.
If it takes that long.
It shouldn't be.
Of a year, aren't we?
Yeah. Course, nothing gets done fast like this well. Only took five years. We're gonna make it by God this year yet.
I was just gonna say, when I took-
Look over there, look all the water that's pooling up where they're bathing well.
We gotta get that sucked out of there, don't we?
I need a motion for an extension on that, please.
I will so move.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and extent, moved and seconded to ask for an extension on the uh, shelter house park from, is that S E T?
S C E F.
S C E F, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? That's good. Uh, okay, what was I talking about?
You wanted to know how we're coming on um, delinquent.
Okay, we got that answered. We're doing pretty good. Did you have something to add, Chris?
I, all I would say is that Lynn works at that almost daily.
Diligently, I know she does.
You know, I, you know, probably not daily, but almost daily and um, I mean, it's just something that we're constantly gonna have to do.
Somebody don't pay the fee and it's daily.
It's, yeah, I mean, you just have to, you just have to do it all the time.
You're fighting all the time, baby. I was down there the other day, man, there was so much stuff over here.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm getting, I'm turning up and violating small planes.
And, and part of it is, part of it is knowledge. I mean, she's, she's done a lot of research on what you have to do and what you can't do. And so, you know, and knowledge always helps and, and-
I'll get you her address or your address, so you'll get her something and tell her not to get it wrong. So.
And there's also the offset program. That's people are gonna be filing their taxes. We have probably maybe ten people on the offset list, so if we get a match in the offset program, they send us a check, they don't get their income tax.
And then they call us mad because they didn't get their income tax.
Wah, 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 wah.
The offset program, what that is, is if somebody lives in town, they owe us money and they high tail it, which happens a lot in the winter time. Uh, if they move out of town, then we can put them on the offset program and we can get their taxes back. If they, if they stay in town, then we, we really can't use that, can we?
Not if they're a customer.
Yeah.
But it's worked pretty good. I mean, there's one gal that moved to Lake City and we got some of it last year and now we're gonna get the rest of it this year.
Yeah.
Good.
And she'll be paid off.
Good.
We get pretty excited when we get one of those checks, don't we?
Well, when we started out, I think we're, shit, I think we were over like forty thousand.
No, I think when we started out, Steve, we were right at twenty-eight or twenty-nine thousand. And I looked the other day and it was, it was right at twenty thousand that we were at, so it's-
Did a good job.
It's come a long ways and, you know, it's got a long ways to go.
They're consuming.
Like I said before, uh, you know, I've, I've looked at um, credit. I don't know what I'm trying to say, but uh, collecting on bills and generally one percent of your revenue uh, is a good place to be and we're under that. We have about three million dollars worth of revenue and, and we're under one percent. That'd be somewhere around thirty or thirty-five thousand dollars, so, so, yeah, I think, you know.
Good job.
We'd like to have it at zero, but I'm just not sure that's realistic.
Yeah, that never happened. Never happened.
We raised all the, all the deals that come in town. You gotta pay more to-
Oh, that was one thing I was gonna ask you. I've got one coming up for rent and possibly two. What is the deposit on the electric?
The deposit is two fifty. It's on everything.
Still two fifty?
Yep.
Okay. They haven't changed that at all then?
For all services.
It's for everything. We can't say it's for electric or for water because we bill them all together.
That's utility.
Yep.
Straight utility, yeah. So that gets you your sewer, your water and your, your, I've had some people ask me and I, I said, it used to be two fifty. I can't, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, okay, um, Rob, anything else to bring up?
Nope.
Gary?
No.
Okay, Ron? Um, I'm gonna tell you that my last day in office as Northwest Iowa's league president should be December fourth. I would like to see at least a couple of councilmen go with me.
That's just a-
Yeah.
Tour.
It's at Cherokee. It's at Denny's. It's on the south side of Cherokee. Um-
You know why it's his last day? Do you know why it's his last day? Cause they're gonna keep him.
No, it ain't. No.
They only-
They got a bed for him already.
Christian, you wanna make any comment on the fire department grants and stuff?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna make a comment on those grants after Steve got all done.
Rob and Cindy and Franny and Tammy are making me a gift to take to Northwest Iowas. Did Cindy tell you that? Uh, we're gonna take that up. We're gonna get that auctioned off. Um, if you didn't get a copy of this email sent to you, I don't know if Rob, Gary, if you guys are on the mailing list or on the emailing list.
I am.
Okay.
I could have one, I don't know.
So it's very interesting to read what I'm trying to get accomplished there. Um, I'd like to see somebody go up with me. I've got, I'm working on Marlon Snyder uh, going up. He's gonna be the crier. I'm gonna buy him supper up there. So he'll be the crier for the auction. So if you got any questions about that, please let me know. Uh, go ahead with the fire deal, Chris?
Uh, well, INS has grants every quarter and the latest quarter was the end of September.
Oh, I see that, yeah.
Uh, we, we filled out three of them here and um, we got all three of them. We got fourteen hundred dollars for new, for one new bunker gear at the fire department. Uh, we got nine hundred and sixty dollars for the mentoring program. Uh, and, and basically what I did was I filled it out as a Sack County mentoring program, not really as a city of Wollate, but we're gonna get the check anyway. Uh, and the, the one that I really wanna tell you about is Lynn filled one out. She got to, she got to fill out her first uh, her first uh, application for a grant and she got three hundred dollars towards a uh-
New wardrobe, oh dog.
No, towards a, yeah, uh, I don't know, it's a toy at the park, so.
Oh, you did? To replace that one that got broke that they're installing?
Yeah.
Oh, good, good.
I'm gonna be very hungry though. I don't think that covers great.
It might.
Well, I, I've had, I've had citizens call me and wanna know what we were gonna do with that one that's gone. And I said, we're working on it. Just give me a little time on that. I can pass that along to them.
Uh, you know, that's something that I'm gonna ask you guys to approve uh, at one of the next, one of the future meetings. So I just want you to look it over and read it. What I did was I called the school and asked them if I could get their credit card policy and, and just kinda copied it. Uh, this is another suggestion of the augur that we should have a policy for our credit card.
Yep.
So.
I was gonna get them ours, but Stoltenberg talked me into having you, you guys use the school, so, which is a good deal.
Yeah, and I, I mean, it's not really that big a deal. I just changed it to say what the city maybe should say on it, but I think you guys should each read through it and look at it and-
We need to uh, give Nancy's copy of that.
Of this? Does she have a credit card? No, this is, this is a policy that says that if I have a credit card, this is what I should use it for as a city employee.
You wanna mention anything about Grody's deal there to Rob or anything about that or?
Board?
Have we adjourned?
No, I haven't got that for you. Uh, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make one.
Second, please?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passed.